I'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. It's Monday, December 12th, 2011. Dr. Richardson, are there agenda changes?
Yes, if you look in your table file, you'll see that there are the handouts for the school improvement plans for Bluefield Middle School and the area learning center, which we'll be receiving tonight. You also have a corrected fiscal year 2011-12 general fund budget amendment with corrected information there. And again, please use that copy of the PowerPoint that's in the table file as we go through that presentation tonight. We also have a number of personnel items, including appointments, increases, decreases, and changes in assignment, and also leave of absence. So all of those items are on the table.
Okay, thank you. If there's no objection, we'll add those items to the agenda as we move through the evening. We have opportunity now for public comment, and this meeting is a little unusual in that we are combining the truth in taxation hearing with our regular meeting. So after we have the tax levy presentation, we will have another opportunity for public comment with respect to that tax levy. But we do have opportunity now for public comment for anyone who wishes to speak to the board on another issue. We ask that you speak from the podium, that you state your name, the group you represent, if you are here speaking on behalf of the group, and we ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes. I'd also like to remind the public, this is not an opportunity to engage in debate or dialogue with the board, but really a listening opportunity for the board. So is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Again, keeping in mind that the tax comments will be taken after the tax levy presentation. Okay, anyone? All right, then we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have on your packet minutes of the regular meeting held on November 28th, 2011. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by Jeff, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ann, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular meeting held on November 28th, 2011, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, those minutes are approved. Onto announcements and recognitions. Dr. Richardson?
Okay, we have several announcements this evening. First of all, in front of you, you should have a copy of this document. That's the Northfield Healthy Community Initiative's 2010-2011 Mini Grants Report. We thought that the board and the community should know that last school year, the Healthy Community Initiative awarded $11,480 in mini grants and funding to projects supporting the Northfield Public Schools. We're very, very grateful to HCI and the generous financial support of the community partners, including the Northfield Area United Way, Women in Northfield Giving Support, The Wings Group, and Carlson Capital Management. Also would like to congratulate our Soy Sents Candle Company, a nonprofit business operated by our area learning center students in their small business class. They received an award for promising practices in character education at the 18th National Forum on Character Education. Students make and market soy candles and soaps, donating all profits to the Northfield Food Shelf. In the six and a half years the business has been in operation, they've donated over $19,000. Monthly donations have ranged from $102 to $815 a month. The students learn many aspects of running a business from production, marketing, to customer service, all with the sole purpose of providing support to our local food shelf. In addition to the financial support, students will class with the food shelf every Friday to stock shelves and help clients with their food selection. Each year, students volunteer a total of over 100 hours. November 2011, while selling candles at Northfield Hospital, the students also partnered with another nonprofit organization called IRIS, Infants Remembered in Silence. Soy Sents Candle Company provided 50 candles for IRIS at cost for their annual memorial service for parents who lost children. Soy Sents Candle Company can truly be considered a social entrepreneurship. We're so proud that they've received this national award and recognized for their service learning efforts. Also, we'd like to congratulate occupational therapist Greg Sumner, academic coach Andrew Gilbertson. They presented a poster session at the 2011 TIES Conference in Minneapolis today on the Live Scribe, Smart Pen, where digital natives and immigrants meet. And again, if you know either Greg or Andrew, you know that they are very tech savvy and are very interested in trying to look at strategies to involve technology and support kids. Also, Northfield Middle School geography teacher Kurt Mickelson, Sibley Elementary kindergarten teacher Allison Hadi have been named the 2011 TIES Exceptional Teachers for their work in using technology with their students. Kurt and Allison will be honored at tomorrow's TIES Technology Conference in Minneapolis. The TIES Conference is one of the nation's preeminent education technology conference and supports K-12 schools in using technology to continuously improve teaching and learning. Our understanding is that Governor Dayton will be there personally to be involved in that ceremony tomorrow morning. So again, congratulations to both Kurt and Allison.
Excellent. Anyone else, anything to add? Okay. We'll move on to our first discussion item, and it's the middle school. Is the middle school going first, or is the ALC going first? School improvement plans. Pardon me? Middle school's going first, okay.
They're arm wrestling for it, so I think we're good to go.
Okay, so we have our middle school principal, Mr. Jeff Peshta, here with the school improvement plan report.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Richardson and Board of Education for inviting us here. There's a lot of work that goes on over a year and a lot of goals that aren't the, you know, the top priority goals that go into the site improvement plan, but it is an opportunity for us to come and share some things with you, and we appreciate that opportunity. So we'll get started with our 2010-2011 report and the plan for this school year. And our site improvement team members, we have several of them with us here tonight. We have Adam Dowd, and we have Ruben Alvarez from our staff. Adam is a parent. And Jill Ponder and Karen Roback are parents that are here, are members of our site improvement team. And when we look at this list of parents and community members and staff, we have a number of people who have been in this role for ongoing through several years. We have some continuity there, which is really great. And it's a nice group to work with, plenty of viewpoints to mix in with us. So the purpose of the plan, challenge all learners to improve achievement and to enhance the school climate, so we have goals in both of those areas. And the mission statement for the middle school. And so here are results from our plan from the previous school year. One of the things that we have been evolving towards is in the past, we worked a lot with MAP data, measures of academic progress, and that's very helpful data, and we still work a lot with MAP data. But there were always some challenges in that with students who are high-performing students kind of reaching towards the ceiling of MAP data, and also the pressure that's going to put upon us through No Child Left Behind to deal with the MCA data. So two years ago, we decided that our site improvement team could help direct our efforts towards really getting that final step towards getting all of our students to become proficient at the MCA exams, which of course is the goal of No Child Left Behind. And the first year that we did that, we were looking for improvement across the board for all students, and then we realized that so many of the students in Northfield, they just walk in, take the test, they pass the test, and that the MCA data is really not what we're using to guide their education as much. And so we wanted to focus back on just those students who had not been identified as proficient in either math or reading the previous year. And we set a goal to make sure that they had at least 2% growth, and what we'll find out right now is that that wasn't too difficult to have that type of growth. And in retrospect, as I was thinking about this over the past weekend, I don't know why, this metaphor came to mind, but when we think of making adequate yearly progress, there's a lot of different ways you can look at it. The one that's been running through my mind lately is, we're trying to get on board a train, we're trying to hop a train, but the train is moving. And if you can imagine, there's an open box car, and we start running alongside it, and we've got to throw our bags in there, and eventually we time it out and jump in, and that's kind of what it's like. So 2% is nice, 2% doesn't necessarily get everybody on board the train. The other thing that's complicated here is we talked about SMART goals, and we want to use that SMART format. The state of Minnesota, you know, under No Child Left Behind, doesn't really follow that format. There are several things in that SMART acronym that don't apply here. One of the things that happens is they keep moving the tests around, so not only are we comparing students from one year in a cohort to another year, but we're also changing the test. Last year, when we set our goal in spring of the previous year, we knew that the math test, the MCA II was going to evolve into the MCA III, and it went from a paper pencil test to a test that was taken online on a computer, a variable in there that we don't know what impact that's going to have. As we waited for the data to come through on the other end after a state shutdown, it became obvious to everybody looking at the test, and to keep in mind, the test is secure material, so nobody knows what's really on the test or what the questions are till after it's over. And they found out that there was a whole different set of standards that the math test was based on, and basically, you can't compare the two. Not only are you comparing two different kids, you're comparing two different tests with too many different variables. So we'll see in a little bit down the road that we had excellent math growth, but we just can't see exactly how it related from the previous year. And reading, also tricky because we waited till October before we could really look at our data, but we wanted to make sure that every student who hadn't been proficient had at least 2% growth. And what we see is that the students who had not been proficient, 45% of them had aggressive growth towards proficiency, so more than one-year growth. If we're looking at, a year in school should equal a year in growth, 45% of those non-proficient students had in excess of that. 55% of them were around a year or slightly less. None of them had zero growth. So if we're looking at 2% growth, that turned out to be a fairly easy goal to make. And as we move forward and we look at where do we put the rest of our energy, now we have that, of those remaining students, we have this group to target in reading. We've been working with Dr. Roger Jenny on analyzing her data, got to us late, but as we started to break that down and look at this 55%, what does that mean in actual students? And I promised I would not give the specific numbers because there's a margin of error there, but I can count the students on one hand that need to make proficiency to, for us to make AYP next year. So of that group, there's just a handful of them. The challenge that will remain is that if we look towards being 100% proficient in 2014, it becomes a much larger number, and, you know, growth, even if it's two years growth, may not be enough for some of those students to get there. So we'll look at that as we move along here a little bit later. All right, and here's our information from the state of Minnesota, and that may be a little bit hard to read, but I'll kind of point out some things. When they break down the demographic groups, we have, as you'll see in a future slide, we have reduced the number of small-scale demographic groups that are not making AYP down to just one group from six three years ago, and that group last year was limited English proficiency in math. And that makes some sense, that if we just identified them in the fall, that they do not have the skills to be proficient in English, that they would have some challenge in math, in particular, the language of math, and we'll talk about that. Some of our other presenters will talk about that in a moment. And we have this aligned next to the district, and then when we look at the state of Minnesota, you'll see a lot of Bs here. So B is not making adequate yearly progress. A is making progress, and A with any other letters after it means it's something that was averaged out, so the growth was averaged out to be in safe harbor, or that they averaged the years together, and growth is sufficient even if they're not completely on track. And when you look at the state, only white and Asian students, those are the only cells in the state that make AYP in math and reading, and that's the composite of white students and Asian students. Every other group in the state is not making AYP. And so we'll get to why we compare to the state here in just a moment. It's also important to note the impact, and why do we keep looking at MCA data, why is it important to the middle school? We test approximately three times as many students as any other school in the district because the tests fall right into where our students are. And so it becomes something that, even though we have better sources of data and a lot of other important goals, we still can't get away from taking a look at this, and that's why our site improvement team focused on that. The other interesting trend is although our LEP students did not make adequate yearly progress this year, and at high school, they did not have enough students to count in that cell, so the high school did not take that hit as far as AYP. And what's happening is, our students that are almost exclusively also in the Hispanic subcategory, keeping in mind that students could belong to multiple categories here, those students have been in Northfield for an extended period of time, and so LEP students or the eligibility for LEP services ends after five years unless we can really demonstrate that they need extended services. And so those students have been here long enough that they're no longer eligible by the time they get to the high school, they're no longer dropping in at third grade or ninth grade, they're basically starting or very close to starting their school careers in Northfield. And ultimately, if this situation and this measurement continues, we may have that same effect catch up to us as well, where students are no longer in LEP, and they'll be considered part of the Hispanic subgroup. And there are other students then that are in there, haven't identified as having an English, being limited English proficiency, that would help raise the composite score up for that group. So we're hoping that is a trend that happens regardless of what happens with No Child Left Behind. Another interesting thing that happened in reading that was kind of alarming was our full school did not make AYP in reading. And that's the message that you've probably been hearing for a number of years, is that ultimately, even the best schools, because they're starting high and the bar is moving up each year, will not be able to make AYP unless they have 100% of their students proficient. Because Northfield started so high in reading, we snuck up on that one already last year, and we're going to tell you how we're going to address that, even though that's the train moving that we're trying to get on board with. So there's a trend over the past three years, those individual demographic cells went from six to two to one. All the while, the bar is rising or the train is moving, we've been able to target those and make progress towards those. Kind of this canary in a coal mine means that we're starting to hit the threshold where if you start high, there's not a whole lot you can do about that. We will be making some specific efforts towards that, and that's featured here in just a little bit of time. And this also tells us that in the SMART goal format, the MCA exams are not really strategic because they're not really sure, you know, you really can't compare the test from year to year. Some of the results are not attainable to say that every school will have every student, regardless of what challenges they have, be 100% proficient is kind of an unrealistic goal, and that kind of flies in the face of that acronym. So last year, you may remember seeing Vince Lombardi, he appeared here, and this was as we decided last year for the first time to come back and focus on MCA results again. We knew that we wouldn't get 100% perfect, but if we did everything that we could to reach that, in the end, what we'd end up with is catching excellence. And so that was our goal, and the results show that we are continuing to make progress, even though we may have been hitting that limit where some of the things are rather impossible to do. So we can't ignore the emphasis on the MCA exams, but we don't want them to define us either. Speaking of Dr. Jenny and the time spent going through all the data, we have a lot of useful data, and we have a lot of data that's not as useful that we have to look at. And in the past few weeks, it's kind of seemed like I was adrift in a sea of data. Pick your favorite movie, Cast Away, Papillon, wherever, where you're floating around in a lifeboat, and it's hard to sort through it all. One of the things that I noticed was, some of the analysis tools that the state used to have on their website were gone, and they hadn't been, they were still using data from the previous year, they hadn't updated them. And then as I went back last week to prepare, well, what's new in there? They revamped the entire website, and everything's in a different place. So now there's even more data to look at, and I'm not sure how helpful that's going to be either, but we'll continue to look at that. So a little bit challenging on that point. But we want to feel good about the progress that we're making, and so we have to anchor ourselves, we can't just float around in a lifeboat. And so we need to find something to anchor ourselves. And when all these things, all these variables are moving around, probably the best way to anchor ourselves is just to look at the state of Minnesota and compare ourselves. Northfield, we tend to think that we're going to perform better than the rest of the state, the state performs better than most of the rest of the country, and we look at things like our sixth grade performance in math, 10% higher than the state of Minnesota, and that's pretty phenomenal. And not only is it a product of the work that we do in sixth grade, our sixth grade PLCs, goals that we set and support, but also we know that the same efforts are taking place at our feeder schools. And therefore, when our sixth graders are coming in, they're ready to perform. It isn't just what happened in sixth grade, it's the cumulative effect of those efforts at those grades. Seventh grade, still 5% above the state, and same for eighth grade. So when we anchor that down, we know that we're doing good work. When we anchor the reading down, you look at sixth grade, 10% above the rest of the state, and 85%. So when you're talking about 100%, the state is at 75%. The state's not going to make 100% anytime, no matter how long they run this out, but we feel good about that. Also, 4% higher in seventh grade. And then when we wondered, well, how do we end up with the whole composite group of reading not making AYP, not moving up the prescribed amount for this year? Once again, it was only a handful of students, I can count them on one hand, that it took to make that, but this is probably what was bringing us down in many respects. And you also see the state of Minnesota going down each year. The state requires reading instruction at sixth grade, and they continue to test us at seventh and eighth grade while they require English or language arts instruction at those years. As much reading as you do in those classes, they're not teaching reading. So if somebody has a reading skill deficit in sixth grade, the English and the language arts classes aren't going to close that gap for them. And so we need to do something about that, and that's where we're putting some of our resources and energy. Before we move to that, though, we do have another achievement goal, and as you recall, the high school and the middle school, when we went to our late starts for PLCs, we wanted to empower our PLCs and make sure that those groups that wanted to set an achievement goal could do that by setting the parameters within their own PLC. And so last year, there were 15 PLCs that called middle school their base school, some of them were intra-district schools, are intra-district PLCs around the district. And obviously, once you get to secondary, you're talking about all kinds of different subject areas, from counselors to art teachers, it goes beyond reading, math, and science. So one of the things that was significant was last year, all 15 of our PLCs posted evidence of practice and action documents on the district website, both the first and second semesters. And that was the first year that I could look at them and see that they really understood what they were doing in their PLC and how to present or how to tell the story to the rest of the community. And so that was a real significant benchmark for us in the evolution of PLCs. And of the 13 groups that did not use MCA data for their achievement goal, seven of them met, whoops, seven of them met or surpassed all their goals. Six either partially met their goals or gathered valuable data that assisted them in revising or changing their goals for 2011. And sometimes we have PLCs with these great ideas, and then they'll meet for several weeks, and they're like, well, we could go, what's behind door number one, or door number two, or box number three? And then they kind of get stage fright, paralysis by over-analysis, because they don't want to not make their goal, or they don't want to look bad. And what I encourage them to do is, if you make the choice, you're going to need to make the choice and follow it through, whatever you find out, even if you don't make the goal that you set, is valuable data, that's the PLC process. It's that hesitation and willingness, trying to find that neutral place that's not going to work. And so when I see six groups did not make all of their goals, I can also look in those documents and see that it helped them move forward in the next year. Of the PLCs that were connected to MCA data, the Team Up group in sixth grade met their growth goal for English language learners and reading, and the eighth grade PLC group ran into a similar problem, the state changed the science test. So even though it was different kids between these two years, it was also a different test, and so we don't know what they did. So they couldn't determine their goal, but when we compared our eighth graders to the rest of the state, we were 5% higher than the rest of the state, so we knew at least we were doing something good there. And then we have a climate goal from last year, and you're familiar, this was the second year of measurement and the third year of this goal overall, it's a six-year goal, to reduce the number of disciplinary referrals. We started out in sixth grade and added a measurement to each grade as we trained staff, and the students progressed through the grade. So we wanted to reduce that by 10%. Again, in sixth grade, above the previous reductions, and then the first year for seventh grade, we wanted to reduce that by 10%. The activities that we did are similar to previous years, we had the planning room where students can go and work on fix-it plans. The new thing that was true last year was, in November, we had a district-wide training of all staff members, bus drivers, food service workers, and to get that common language and that common philosophy. And I think that was the most impactful thing that we did. We did a follow-up workshop for our staff. Once again, I go and train the sixth grade staff and students, and then we implement this as we go through each year. Now we have students in high school who have come through this program, and we hear positive things from the high school of the impact that it has as they make their way through each year. Reporting back, sixth grade, even though it had decreased previous years, we did make another 10% reduction last year between those two grades. Seventh grade, in their first record year, was another 8% reduction. And at school-wide, in the first two record years, we had a total decrease in referrals of 48%. And the middle school was recognized with the Promising Practice Award, and we had the privilege to take a trip to the Capitol. And here are some of our staff that is a part of our student management system. There was Diane Lyman who keeps the records, and Nicole Prendel and Doug Duchesne who helped staff the planning room. The Secretary of State and the Assistant Secretary of the MEE were there. And we started out in the Capitol Rotunda, and there was a big rally going on, and they basically moved us out of there, it was too noisy, we couldn't have our ceremony, so we ended up in some conference room. And this young lady over here was representing Northfield as well, so we had two Northfield groups out of a handful of people being recognized that day. So it was a nice acknowledgement of the efforts that we have had. And then we had a second climate goal to start moving towards alternate spring conference formats last year, and we wanted to improve our parent participation by 10%. It was the second year that we were counting, not how many parents arrived, it's great in Northfield that parents come back multiple nights and multiple parents come, but we wanted to make sure that each student was represented. The spring conference actually attendance rose by 1%, not 10%, but we were able to basically run a very alternative format with many different types of student presentations, information for parents, looking for what's the most valuable thing for parents. And we had 183 parents fill out the survey online, which helps us guide our conferences for this year. And some of the events that we're trying to do, for example, the eighth grade awards night, usually there's a handful of teachers at that event. Last year, every faculty member was at the eighth grade awards night. So we're trying to make sure that the events that we have that are valuable, that we have full participation in. So we're moving on to our plan for this year. Once again, we're going to continue out with the PLC goal. We found it to be very helpful for promoting the evolution of the PLCs, so we'll go with that again. PLCs in action, students following up on some of the work done in the PLCs there. And as I alluded to earlier, we are going to move away from that MCA goal now. We want to get that handful of students to be AYP next year, but we also know, just like our one group was a group that had made AYP the previous year, any of the groups that have not made AYP in the past five years are just as likely to pop up at any time. We know what they are, here they are listed, and so that's where we want to put any discretionary resources that we have. If we do that, and we're using research-proven strategies, we'll make the biggest impact we can, and we know we're going to be successful because we're just going to put that right into there. And how we're going to do that is laid out right here. So at the start of the school year, we're putting staffing into these strategies that we talked about, and this is a long list, but to kind of highlight it there, what's in red is the 2.0 FTE, or Full-Time Teacher equivalencies, in core reading instruction. What is in red there is the only thing the state is requiring us to do. The rest of these things are above and beyond, are 4.6 FTE, above and beyond what the state is requiring us to do to get those handful of students up and over that threshold. And at this point, if we're ready to switch over to talking about co-teaching a little bit here. So some of these strategies may make sense because you've heard about them before, and some of them like co-teaching, we wanted to very quickly kind of bring you up to speed on what those are. And we have two people who are rapidly becoming experts in co-teaching, Ruben Alvarez and Sarah Vandenocher from our ESL staff, and they're going to explain to you a little bit about what co-teaching is, and Jill Ponder will finish off with the rest of our slides up here.
My name is Ruben Alvarez.
And I'm Sarah Vandenocher.
I feel like I'm, oh, go ahead.
I'm Jill Ponder.
And for the past two years, almost two years now, Sarah Vandenocher and I have been working with Team Up through the University of Minnesota, and what it is, it's a cohort of four different schools, rural schools throughout Minnesota. And we've just really been focusing on the strategies that are important for English language learners to understand the language of books. We've realized at the beginning of, well, what would you say, at the beginning of those two years, that our students have the social language, they have the ability to- the ability to speak in English, they can hang, they can talk with their friends and, and function well speaking. But when it comes in, when it comes time for the classroom, the academic language that they need is very, is lacking. So what we did was that we joined Team Up, and through this, we've been talking and working together with our fellow co-teachers. And so what we're, we're going to do is just give you a short snippet on what co-teaching is about.
All right. So last year, and Ruben, for the past four years, we've been co-teaching with content teachers at the middle school. And co-teaching is when you have two teachers teaching a content class. So you have the content teacher teaching either math, or social studies, or science, some content area, and then you have that teacher teaching with the ESL teacher. And one of the key things that Ruben and I both do with co-teaching is we do a lot of co-planning time before classes. And so it's not something where the teacher, the subject area teacher comes in and teaches the content, and the ESL teacher assists however possible. It's something that we work together, we collaborate throughout the week, throughout the school year, and we try to set goals and make sure that our language objectives really match with the content's objectives. And so through Team Up, we've been working with other teachers around the state, as well as professors at the University of Minnesota, to help us try to align the state content standards with the language that our students need to meet. And what we do is we build background knowledge for students. Oftentimes, our ESL students or other students who aren't ESL need a lot of background knowledge built before they're able to fully comprehend or access the information in class. We also work to build the students' vocabulary, not just the key vocabulary terms in the content area, but also those terms that appear, just regular terms within the reading context that students might not have any knowledge about. And then another thing that we do is, we are sure to make sure that what we're doing in one class matches vocabulary reading strategies that students have in another class. So for example, this year, I'm co-teaching two sections of sixth grade social studies. And so I work with both those teachers to make sure that our language objectives match up. And then we've also been working really closely with the reading teacher, both reading teachers and writing teachers in the sixth grade teams, to make sure that what we're doing in all our classes matches the vocabulary and writing activities they're doing in other classes, so that there's continuity among those classes that all sixth graders are a part of.
So what, what our goal is to really have the, the classes, our CO-TALK classes, language-based. And for example, I, I co-teach math, and what we really try to focus on is the language of math. The students that are in the CO-TALK math class are those ELL students who might have a struggle in understanding the language of math. And so to be able to maneuver their way through math, they need to have the vocabulary. So we've been focusing a lot on that content, that content vocabulary. And it, oh, yeah, it certainly isn't just ELL students.
As a parent of a child who's not an ELL student, but who has the benefit of being in one of these classes, I can tell you that I see a child of mine who struggles with math prior to coming to this class, and oh my gosh, the support that she's getting here is invaluable. She's scoring higher than she's ever been, and more importantly, her self-confidence and her math skills are super high. And this is a kid who is happy to pick up her homework and says, wow, I rock at math. I'm going to whip this out really quick. Never in my life have I had that until this, so very thankful.
Thank you, yeah, thank you guys for, for clarifying that. The CO-TALK classes are a combination of students who maybe just struggle in math, or struggle in science, or social studies. And so it's not just ELL students, because what we've found was that a lot of the strategies that we use really is beneficial to all students, all students.
The middle school discretionary budget is very small this year. It's about $75,000, with approximately $6,000 of capital being directed to support this action plan. So directing staffing is a more substantial maneuver, with 6.6 FTE representing approximately $330,000 investment. As you can see in this slide, talking about our achievement action plan, where we've placed, the 6.6 FTE fall roughly into these tiers of the response-to-intervention model that we have been incorporating into the middle school for these past two years. The boundaries between the tiers are not always hard lines, especially within our Northfield middle school population, so. We are currently in the recording year for our eighth grade cohort, which brings the entire school through the phased-in implementation process. Moving forward, we expect to maintain a level of disciplinary referrals, which is half that of the historic baseline that was established in 2008, 2009. We feel that pushing for further reduction beyond the 50% level would possibly yield the byproduct of teachers and other staff avoiding writing referrals in an effort to reach that goal. We agree that writing quality referrals is a critical part of maintaining a safe and productive learning environment.
Fall participation rose 11% over the previous year. And many students accepted the invitation to join their parents.
Something that Ruben and I have been working with at the middle school is creating events for parents, especially parents of students, our ESL students, and maybe parents that might not otherwise feel as comfortable coming to the middle school. Last year, we planned a Cinco de Mayo event, which you can see a picture from up there. And that was a fun opportunity for students, particularly students who come from Latino backgrounds and celebrate Cinco de Mayo. And we had it in conjunction with the choir concert, as well as our media specialist, Amy Seave, had a book event, so parents could come, they could, before the choir concert, have some food, listen to music. We had the Aztec dancers and folkloric dancers from Northfield come and perform. And parents could get books and then go on to the choir concert, and it turned out to be a really fun evening. And a lot of my ESL students' parents came and loved it and felt comfortable. And a lot of our ESL students, who might not otherwise have a lot of opportunities to step up and be leaders in the school, really felt that this was part of their cultural backgrounds. And so I saw a lot of my students step up to the plate and, you know, told people where to go, and just felt really proud, and that was really great to see.
We also provide a Team Up bilingual parent night, where Latino parents, they're welcome to come. Last year, we had it at Greenville, and this year, we planned it to be at the middle school. And it was a really great experience because we were able to connect parents to setting up email addresses, because everything is, is online with Skyward and the lunch accounts. And so we were able to help them get an email account and teach them how to use Skyward and, and to see the teachers' websites and their, the gradebook. And one really great experience that we had was that one of the team members on, on the Team Up team is the web teacher, and she was able to connect us with a web student who spoke Spanish. And so the student was able to give a tour to the parents of the middle school and all of the really great, the whole facility that, that belongs to them, I mean, they, belongs to them.
Previous goals have been successful and need to be continuously supported to continue to make a difference. So this is some things in particular that I have experience with, having a daughter who just finished three years of middle school, and another one in sixth grade coming in. So the parent communication has been, we've gotten a lot of great feedback on that, the Skylert messaging for updates, the newsletter, and I think those things being translated into Spanish is, is really wonderful. And also giving the additional access through email for some of those people in our community. And then the new sixth grade lunch module, we've gotten very good feedback on that. So we've got extended serving time. And then, for those of you who have had sixth graders, one of the things they complain about often is not having the opportunity to have recess during the day. So there is some earned recess period at the end of the lunch modules, and, and I've heard a lot of great comments from our sixth grade cohort on that. And then the sound distribution systems, I mean, that's something that we've had in place for a while and that we'll continue to use. It's something that our sixth grade cohort, and even, I think, the full cohort now, had experience with when they were, so sixth, seventh, and eighth, had experience with when they were still in the middle, elementary school level. So having that continue on now into middle school is, been very valuable for us.
And we thank you for the time tonight. We've taken up a big chunk of your meeting, but it's our chance to come and present what we've been working so hard on. And acknowledge some other people who provided photos, or, I don't have Joe Mauer in there, but there he is anyway. And also, middle school is home of the Twins once a year. So, so thank you for the opportunity, and we certainly, myself or anybody in the panel would be able to entertain any questions that you might have.
Okay. Anyone have questions, comments? Ellen?
So I'm curious, the Team Up program is in the second of a third, of three years of sort of cohort model, is that right?
This was the second summer.
Second summer.
That they worked with the University of Minnesota and.
Is that it?
Five schools, correct?
Five, I said four, yeah.
Yeah, five, five schools around the state, and so they come back together, and this was.
This is the final, this is the end.
This is the end, okay.
And they will tell you, it has been a lot of work to spend that much of their summer, putting in extremely long weeks, but I don't think any of them would trade that for anything, the experience that they've gained, so. And we get a visit from the University of Minnesota every few months, and, and we get a lot of compliments on the way it's being carried out. You know, it's for one thing to go through the training and to learn all this stuff and put plans together, but then you have to follow them through. And so we feel really good about the feedback we received from them.
Okay. And Noel, did you have?
If you'll indicate on Slide 11 at the eighth grade, 2011 and 20 tests, tests were not comparable. Can you help me understand why that's significant?
Yeah, I don't think it was Slide 11, but we'll, we'll talk about the comparability as.
Yeah. Eighth grade, I think we referred to the eighth grade, 2011, or 2010 and 2011 tests.
And the science test, I think.
Oh, the science test? Okay. So the science test was, they don't give the same test between years. And so they changed the standards for the test, and they changed, basically, I think, the, the level of questioning. And so the entire state dropped dramatically across the state, and teachers were preparing them not only the same way, but improving the way they prepared students for that test. And so Dr. Jenny would do a much better job of it as he, you know, communicates with people in those circles. But I think it's safe to say the whole state just said, you know, when you do a direct comparison, you can't do that. You can just compare how you did compared to everybody else the previous year, or how you did this past year compared to everybody else. But if you're looking for 5% improvement or whatever, it just is, is a different situation that, that doesn't make sense.
Well, isn't they asked the question a different way? They've actually changed the content and the level of the question.
Right. Thank you.
They changed this, actually changed the standards.
Yeah, they changed the standards, of course, they're not at the same questions. So even if you gave the same test and you gave, gave two different versions, there'd be some distinction between how, how secure you are in saying, we went up 2%. Well, now, not only is it different questions, it was different standards. And I don't think that anybody expected to see the whole state. You know, we didn't get a rotten group of kids the next year, it just was a whole different, whole different game.
Thank you.
Julie, did you?
Well, two comments. One, I wanted to just thank you for always including parents in your site improvement plan process. I think it's really important to get their perspective. And I'm glad that Ellen asked about Team Up, because the other question I had was, is there grant dollars attached with Team Up, or am I thinking of something else?
I'm going to let, I'm going to let you answer that very quickly, and I'll see if they want to add anything to it. The participants receive a stipend for participating, for all the time that they put in, and the materials and things like that are covered by the University of Minnesota. But they're not giving us money to go apply it into school. So when we showed the slide about how we got creative, and if you remember last spring, we came by and we talked about reorganizing the master schedule, and in particular, sixth grade, and people would say, well, why are you changing it? And the theme over and over was that efficiency, efficiency, efficiency. Where do you come up with 4.6 FTE when the district doesn't have any extra to give you? You squeeze it out of other places, and by being more efficient, it freed that up so we could do something like put two teachers in the same classroom. And, and one of the questions that may come up is, when you put two teachers in the classroom, how do you know we're getting twice, twice the money is worth? And that's another thing that Dr. Jenny and I have been working at, so many variables, but we're, over the past three years, with, with the science class that Ruben first started, and then the past two years with things like accelerated math classes in sixth grade, co-teaching in, in other levels, we've actually done the comparisons between students who were in those, those classes, and the rest of their peers, the growth for individual students, a lot of different data mashing. And what we find out is, those students who were eligible for that class were performing below their peers. When they're in those classes, they have growth similar to their peers, and the next year, they have growth oftentimes twice what their peers are having as far as growth, not outperforming them by growth. And we're seeing this second-year bump from them, getting that confidence and getting that, in many cases, the vocabulary, the language of even social studies, it's, we're really promoting literacy and reading and things like that through the social studies class, so that's why it ties into this. So, and a lot, a lot more analysis taking place on that as we go over the years. So we do believe it is worth that. And when we talk about research, where do you get your research from? It's these people in the summer going through and looking at those research studies and finding out why we might want to try something like that. Is there anything you want to add to that concept?
Well, just speaking to the University of Minnesota professors that are mentors, they are talking about giving us a grant to continue Team Up at, at a local level at our school. It's, it's not a significant grant, but enough to provide books or materials or to work with, with other teachers. And the other thing that I forgot to mention was that through Team Up, we've been able to, to have our second-year cohort of, of teachers that meet together after school, and we just talk about the ELL issues in our classrooms, and we also provide materials through that, through those meetings. It's, it's a great experience to have.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excellent report. Thank you.
Okay, our next school improvement plan report, Pat Harlan is here from the Area Learning Center.
I'm Pat Harlan, and I'm the Director of the Area Learning Center. Thank you, Dr. Richardson, Madam Chair, board members. I don't think I'll share the middle school one again. And it's just the Earl Matt, right? Okay, all right. Tonight, I'm here to share our 2010, 2011 progress report, and then look at what type of improvement plan we put together for, for this school year. Our site console, our teachers, our core subject areas that cover all aspects, and also includes our educational assistant, who is part of our ALC program, Kathy Smostad. Our first objective one was, and it becomes a common thread every year, you probably have heard, and it doesn't go away, it's, it's the concerns that we have with the students that come to us with varied backgrounds. But we're always looking at to increase our attendance rates within our program. And what we're looking at is to increase that, we would increase that, that 75% of our students would demonstrate improvement of their attendance from one year to the next by 25. next by 25%. And the progress that we've made and some of the things that we implemented, PLC is vital to our program and what we do on a weekly base, monthly basis. So our PLCs, PLCs spend time collecting and reviewing attendance data of individual students. We actually take a list of our kids and look at each student, actually on a monthly basis, to see how they are improving. We have implemented our new grading and attendance process. I think I talked about this last year. We give grades to our students eight times a year. So on their transcript, they are seeing a grade coming onto their transcript a little bit quicker than nine weeks. And we have found this to be, the kids really notice that and really want to know what's going, going on. So we figure about every 20 to 24 days, kids are getting a grade. And with that is tied attendance. If students miss a certain amount of time, they would not receive a credit, or they would, usually what happens if they're not attending, they're not passing anyway, so that we can look at that data and determine, you know, some of the causes of why, why they may not be attending. We also continue to look at drug awareness and current trends with our students. We have the support of a CD concert that is with us last year twice a week, and this year she is with us three days a week. One of the things that we found beneficial last year was we had a book study. We went back and looked at the Frameworks of Poverty by Ruby Payne, because we know that many of our kids, I shouldn't say many of our kids, some of our kids are homeless. Some of them, many, 50% of them are on free and reduced lunch. And so we wanted to look at some of the aspects of kids who are indeed living in poverty. From that has come our backpack program, which I've talked previously about. And that continues, and we have actually expanded. I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but our, one of our projects with our students and service learning is they pack up backpacks and distribute them to the elementary site and middle school. And so now we've reached out to the greater community, and the kids take great pride in putting these together, going out to the schools. I think we have three every week that are delivered to the three elementary schools and the middle school. And they are used. And I'm thinking we might even be expanding that more, so. And then, of course, we did spend some time looking at bullying, harassment, abuse, because we find that some of our kids' attendance is a direct reflection of maybe some things that are going on. Kids call it drama. Sometimes it is harassment. So we looked at that piece as well. So our, this is some of the statistics. Our average daily attendance for the 2010-11 school year was 82%. And our individual student attendance data shows that 37% of our students improved their attendance by 25%, but we did not meet our goal of 75%. It's just a continual, ongoing concern that we do have, that we continue to address. That was the progress. So what are we going to do for improvement this year? For the 2011-12, we will continue to collect and review the data. One thing we want to look at is to research and develop strategies to change the students' attitudes towards attendance. So we're actually going to be surveying the students on their attitudes and beliefs on attending regularly, and have already started that process. Kids have done some writing in the Read 180 classroom, looking at why kids don't attend. And we're going to collect that data from them. It's why they don't attend, what would be, what would make them attend, what things can we improve upon? So maybe we can look at some of those things and use that as well. And we're also looking at the bullying, whether that's direct or cyberbullying, is also being looked at again. Our other improvement objective was to improve the student learning as measured on the MCA Our goal was to increase that 40% of our students would pass the math, reading, and writing assessments by June 2011. If you remember, in, I think it was October, we were here and we talked about our PLC and the teaching vocabulary. That continues, we're going to continue to do that. It's amazing to hear the students talk about using the vocabulary that they're learning. I hear them in the classrooms talking, or even out in the hallway talking about it. We also, teachers were trained in reading in the content area. That was a fall workshop. And we're also looking at some math remediation. PLC time was spent looking at instructional strategies that are effective, and it's, because our teachers represent a core area, it's really interesting to listen to them share strategies that they're using with the students. It almost becomes individualized instruction for the kids. And what works well for some, some are very tech savvy, some like the arts, you know, some like the sports, and we try to build that into their academics as well. Positive behavior intervention, all the staff was, went through the training with Kormann Cronenberg, above line, below the line, and we implement that. We taught, use that terminology, and it's across the whole school. And then we also did some things, review on test-taking strategies, ways that teachers can work with the kids when it comes to those test days. You know, we make sure that they have food before they took the test, you know, that they were in the right frame of mind. A lot of kids have test anxiety, how do you deal with that? What types of self-talk kids can use? So we built in a different strategies for the students. Thirty, 36% of our 10th grade students were proficient in the reading test. That was actually up, last year it was 30%, so there was an increase there. We did implement the Read 180 program. This is our second year of that, and we're seeing some of the benefits from Read 180. 18% of our 11th grade students were proficient. This is down, it was 26% last year, so this has gone down. And you'll see in the next slide what, how we're going to address that as well. So our site improvement for the 2011-12, we continue with reading in the content area. I also mentioned we continue to have the Read 180 program. Our PLCs continue to focus on vocabulary, because we know kids need to know the words in order to do the test. They need to be able to decipher what that word means by looking at the roots of that word. And we're also looking at the instructional strategies. We've also implemented a new math curriculum that is, really hones in on those basic skills that the students need. The math is definitely a subject area that has become very individualized. I think our math teacher does an excellent job to look at where those students are, when they come into the classroom, and then build to improve upon where they need to end up with in order to pass that test. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Pat. Anyone have questions, comments? Julie?
I just have a comment, and one thing I think that is your greatest strength is recognizing that the socioeconomic factors that go, that play into, you know, the students, your particular students, and why it does seem sort of crazy to just talk about attendance, but that's a huge thing. And I think the way you're choosing to delve into that is really, really good, and would love to hear what you discover when you continue to delve into it. And I think just what you were addressing, poverty and number of other factors that play into their academic success, and I think you do that really well.
And hopefully next year, when I come back, I can show, you know, what are the reasons the kids aren't coming, and, you know, what we can do. I may need to buy a bus.[1224.21][1224.21][laughter] A big van.
An alarm box.
Alarm box.[1228.21][1228.21][laughter]
Text the wake-up call.
Yeah.[1233.64][1233.64][laughter]
Anybody else? Thank you very much, Pat.
Thank you.
See you again. Thank you. Okay. We are on to the truth in taxation presentation for the 2012 property tax levy, and we have Stephanie Schaubach, our Director of Business Services, to review the levy and the current year's proposed budget amendments. Board members, I just want to remind you, we have corrected PowerPoint in the table file, so you'll want to be looking at that. And then, as I mentioned before, we will take public comment after Stephanie's presentation with respect to the, to the tax levy. So, thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Richardson. Tonight, we will be discussing the proposed levy certification, as well as the current year's budget, and of course, providing time for questions, any questions you may have, and as mentioned, followed by opportunity for public comment. So a few of the items that I would like to discuss in the presentation is the certification timeline, as well as this year's current legislative changes that are impacting the proposed levy, followed by an analysis of the proposed levy for the pay 2012 property taxes, and wrapping up with the current year budget discussion. So the, as we talk about the levy certification process, it really begins around June in the summer each year, when we start to gather data, submitting it to the Minnesota Department of Education, so they can calculate limitations that we're able to certify for our levy. And you'll recall, at the end of September, I was here before you with the proposed preliminary levy, that we were required to have certified to the county auditor by October 7. Once the county auditors receive all of the information from local government entities on their levy certification information, they compile the preliminary tax statements that they send out to taxpayers, and they're required to do that by November 24. I think most of the taxpayers within the district started getting their tax statements the week prior to Thanksgiving. And then tonight, we are here, of course, to satisfy the truth in taxation discussion, and we are required as a district to certify a final levy to the home county auditor by December 28. So the timeline for levy certification really spans about six to seven months, but the financial life of a levy is much longer. It runs roughly 30 months. As I mentioned, we began submitting or gathering data in the summer to submit to MDE, and we go through the certification process in August and September, come back before you in December, this timeframe here. And these taxes are actually collected from the taxpayers in 2012. They're utilized and budgeted in our financial year of the 2012-13 school year budget year. And then we wrap up, as we wrap up that year, we're looking way out into November 2013, where we're required to finalize the audit of that financial year. So really, it begins June of 2011, and we won't finalize this levy cycle until November 2013. I like to just present this so, because it does get confusing talking about levies oftentimes, because we're, usually have three active levies at any given time in different stages of their financial life. The most significant legislative change that impacted this year's proposed levy, of course, was the Homestead market value credit. And much of what's on this slide is a recap of what we discussed in September. We do have additional information to further that discussion. But just to recap what we discussed previously back in September, this Homestead market value credit was repealed effective in the 2012, with the 2012 taxes payable. It really was under the radar in the education world, because many of the folks focused on K-12, were looking at the K-12 legislative action going on. And this change actually took place in the Tax Committee. So it was really not, there wasn't a great deal of awareness in the, in the K-12 community. And when it was first summarized by the House Research Department, it was very, you know, simplistic change. The credit was going away, and it was going to be replaced by Homestead value exclusion, so that it would have relatively, early on, they thought it would have relatively the same impact on taxpayers. What really happened, though, was a reduction in state aid by, across the state, by $261 million. And of that, about $58 million related to K-12 funding. The old law was enacted in 2001, and it was a credit that was given on levies that were placed on net tax capacity rather than referendum market value. This does not include operating referendum that we just went to the voters with in November. It does impact levies such as debt service, operating capital, OPEB, those types of levies. And the simplistic calculation or formula here in the middle for the tax rate and how it's arrived at is taking the total certified levy for the district and dividing it by the district's total taxing capacity to get a tax rate. We'll come back to that formula in just a minute to show you how the impact on taxpayers was much greater than was ever discussed previously. Previously, the Homestead property tax bills were calculated in two steps. The initial bill was taking that tax rate and multiplying it against the individual property tax owner's net tax capacity of their property. And then on the final bill, the credit that the state paid was used as a reduction, or reflected as a reduction to their, on their taxes for their bill. The credit was a maximum of $304 on a home of $76,000. And this had a declining impact as the value of homes went up until the maximum value of the home of $413,800 was reached. Then there was no longer a credit that was applicable. The credit was subtracted proportionally on the bill across all the local government taxing agencies. And taxpayers have been feeling the burden of a reduction of this credit for a few years now. In 2010 and 2011, credits on payments for cities and other local government agencies have been reduced. During that timeframe, though, the school districts were receiving 100% of that credit. So the taxes that school districts, their impact that they had on the taxpayers was not increased disproportionately by a reduction in credit, much like the cities have been facing the last few years. But under this new law, 100% of the credit is gone away for all local governments, including the school districts. In order to partially neutralize the impact on homeowners, I mentioned earlier, they went from paying this credit to excluding the proportional value of each individual taxpayer's home. And the result of the exclusion was an average drop in the net tax capacity of approximately 5% statewide. And for Northfield, that was roughly a 4.6% decrease. And I think if I can back, back up to that formula that we just looked at here in the middle, that tax capacity right here, this portion of the formula is what decreased for our district by roughly 4.6%. So when that decreased, that drove up that tax rate in the formula. The, the impact on this change legislatively has, it varies greatly among school districts, so there's, there's no common impact. It's really the burden with school districts that have more low-valued homestead property is being affected the most. And the elimination of the state-paid credit will increase the burden of school taxes by roughly 2.6% on the taxpayer. However, it does not bring any additional money into the school district. It is really just that shift of what was once state-aid-paid credit to property tax-paid. So I included in the presentation some various different types of property and the impact that this would have had, had it taken effect on the pay 2011 property taxes, because we know exactly what those were. know exactly what those were, and we could give some estimates there. The residential homestead property on the top here, with an estimated value of $250,000, would have seen an increase from roughly $1,468 to $1,501, or $33 overall annually, which was a 2.2% increase. We can look down to commercial industrial with an average cost of $1 million. They saw, they would have seen in 2011, a 3.4% increase roughly. And again, that's without any additional revenues coming into the district. That's just simply the shift from state to property tax burden. And then, if you go a couple lines further down, you can see the agricultural non-homestead property type getting the greatest burden of roughly 4.8%. And that is a property type that, you know, being non-residential, they never got the credit in the first place. So, when we go back to that formula, we reduce the net tax capacity overall for the district, we drove up that tax rate, they're really feeling the largest burden of this change. So, this slide really is just bringing us back to what was presented to you in September, where we started with our levy certification process. And this is the side-by-side levy of the pay 2011 and the preliminary proposed pay 2012, prior to the election that took place. And it's really representing this levy in three different ways. This first one with the pay 2011, this year's total levy being 14.3 million. We originally began our proposed certification process with the pay 2012 levy at 14.7, or a 2.72%. And this breakdown shows how we would utilize that levy within the district, with the general fund making up the vast majority of the levy at $8.4 million, followed by the debt service at just under 5.8 million. If we go down to this middle section here, it's the same amount of the levy, just broken down into different types of category. We have the voter-approved, which makes up the vast majority of the levy. We preliminarily proposed the pay 2012 levy with 10 point, almost $10.7 million of the 14.7 being voter-approved, with $4 million being other statutory or required types of levies. And then, the bottom representation of the levy is really, breaks our levy down into that which is referendum market value versus net tax capacity levies. And I've highlighted the net tax capacity levies here in the gold. This is where the homestead market value change has the impact, because it is on these levies that that change has taken place. And you can see the majority of our total levy, eight point, just under 8.9 million of our levy comes from net tax capacity levies. So, as we look at where we started and combine that with the change of the homestead market value credit, the legislative changes around that, we recognize the burden to minimize the impact of this legislative change falls solely with the local government entities. It really is not bringing any, I can't, I'm sorry, I'm repeating myself, but it's just important to note that it's not bringing any new dollars into the district. It just really is shifting that burden onto taxpayers. It's very difficult to, as we look at our levy, to look for areas where we can reduce the levy dollar-for-dollar. You know, because so much of it is either statutory or required, or formula-driven and tied to state aid. So, for instance, I'll take a hypothetical dollar amount. If we wanted to try to reduce our levy by $100,000, there's many areas within the levy that if we were to reduce that, we would have an offsetting reduction to state aid. So, it might mean a total reduction of $200,000 in revenue. So, it's really tricky to try to find areas that we can implement a reduction and, at the same time, minimize risk to the district. Again, the reduction to have, to have the greatest impact, we would want to look at net tax capacity area, levy areas, because that is where this legislative change is having the shift. Approximately 60% of our levy is made up of net tax capacity levies. The majority of those levies are for debt service, which are statutorily required. If we were to not levy for debt service, we would default on our long-term debt. So, that would not be an option. The next largest area of net tax capacity levy is that in the facilities and technology area. We spent a great deal of time communicating and doing an analysis on the needs within our facility and technology areas, and it was really the driving force for going to the voters for renewal of our capital levy project, which the voters graciously did renew. And so, we know with the great challenges we have in that area, it's not really a feasible option either. That leaves one area that we could look to, to potentially try to minimize the burden of this legislative change, and that is the levy that we have for OPEB, which is a net tax capacity levy. We currently, in our preliminary proposed pay 2012 levy, we have certified $819,000 for OPEB. We do have some ability to reduce this, and at the same time, minimize the risk to the taxpayers. You'll recall, two board meetings ago, I was before you with the bond refunding, that ultimately saves the district dollars, or taxpayers' dollars, on our debt service. And what, one option we do have is that we could advance recognize that savings to offset a reduction in OPEB. In addition, the district has been very successful in restructuring its severance and other post-employment healthcare benefits within its contracts, which has driven down our costs on an ongoing basis, and has allowed us to build up a designated assigned fund balance for OPEB. So, with those two realities that we have before us, we felt that it would be, it would be responsible to look to the OPEB area to reduce the levy for the pay 2012, so as to minimize the impact of this legislative change that was brought on by the state. In order to do this, what we would do is propose, within our budget amendment for the 11-12 year that I'll be talking about in just a moment, I would, we would propose that we increase the assignment for the OPEB fund balance in this year for the dollars that are coming in through the levy. We roughly have about $3 million assigned in the fund balance for severance and OPEB currently. We would propose that we increase this by this year's levy, which is roughly $745,000. Then, we would move forward and propose that we reduce the OPEB levy that we would recognize for the fiscal year 12-13 year, that $819,000 that we currently have proposed. For the fiscal year 13-14, the district will realize that savings from the bond refunding, it would allow, that would allow us to recapture some of the OPEB that we've reduced. And then, the district will also continue to monitor opportunities for refunding of long-term debt. We know we have a fairly favorable opportunity that will be before us within this next year for another refunding, that we could utilize that savings to go towards the OPEB, and again, minimize that, that risk of future cost increases in that area. Moving forward with this, I wanted to just give a representation of what the levy would have looked like, and this is prior to the election again. So, when we looked at this previously, we looked at the preliminary pay 2012 levy, and we were looking at an overall increase from this year, from pay 2011, of 2.72%. And again, these are just the three different ways that we've categorized, that I show them reflected, same levy, each, in each of these areas. If we were to reduce the OPEB levy portion for the pay 2012, prior to the election results being added in, it would be a reduction of 3% from the prior year. And you can see the impact of that would reside in the general fund, because that's where our OPEB comes into. It would also reside in the non-voter-approved, because the OPEB levy is a non-voter-approved, as well as that net tax capacity levy type. And that would be an overall 3% reduction from this year. So, from there, when we add the election results of the operating levy increase, what we do then is we, oop, sorry, got a little click happy there, sorry. What we do is add that into the general fund. So, it brings it up, back up over the prior year by 6%. It would have been more than that had we not put in that reduction for the OPEB. But it is, that is the only area where we can have the greatest impact on the taxpayers and try to help mitigate this, this burden that's been shifted to them. As we add in the referendum that was passed, we see the voter-approved portion of that levy increase, as well as the referendum market value levy increase. Those are the categories that are getting affected by that. With that proposed levy, the total, grand total levy for the pay 2012 would be $15,189,967 total. The largest majority of that levy falls in the general fund referendum of 45%, followed by the debt service at 38%. This general fund other, that 9% portion, that is the portion that's being reduced by the proposed OPEB reduction. This operating capital levy, this 5%, is the $750,000 renewal. Actually, it's, it's renewing upon expiring, but that is not an increase in levy any, any which way. It's, that is held flat. And then, the smallest portion of our levy comes in with the community service funds at 3%. So, as we look to this proposal, there are a few things that we would bring forward for the budget, some not necessarily related to the levy, but we would be proposing a budget revision. And as you recall, when we began our planning for the 2011-12 year, there was so much uncertainty at the state when they faced their $5 billion deficit, that we took the approach of looking at the worst-case scenario. And so, what we include in this budget amendment is the recognition of the revenue which was not cut from our budget, rather just delayed. You know, we've talked about how that presents our cash flow challenge, but we would be requesting an adjustment to the revenue so that we can recognize in the 11-12 roughly $2.45 million. Again, that's from not cutting the state aid, it's delayed, but we do have to recognize it, so we want to incorporate that into the budget. There's also included in that a slight increase, with good news, slight increase in enrollments that have been, our numbers have been looking up slightly as we've been monitoring those. In addition, we're incorporating the $50 per AMCPU increase in funding received by the state, and that's, that roughly equates to $224,000, as well as a recognition of special education revenues and realignment to the appropriate year. We had some accruals from, you may recall, the auditor presenting our audited financial statements and discussing some of those special education revenues. So, we would be asking to realign that to the appropriate year. That would equate to $677,000 in revenue and $766,000 in expenditures. What that looks like from the budget perspective, then, I have, this is just the general fund, and I have the 2010-11 actual financials here in this first column. And this unreserved, unassigned fund balance is what we focus on when we look at the financial status or state of the district at, at a point in time. We ended the 11, the 10-11 year with roughly $7.7 million in unreserved, unassigned. Our preliminary budget, built again on the, on the worst-case scenario, had us spending down the fund balance by $1.7 million. This revised budget amendment would incorporate those revenues that I just discussed in the previous slide, as well as a small adjustment to the expenditures. And we would, there's a few proposals I want to point out in this amendment as well. Again, there's the assignment for the OPEB, to put that into the, increase the assignment from roughly $3 million to the 3.7 million here. In addition, the, this proposal is requesting that the class-size contingency be increased by $45,000, restoring it to the original $150,000, to address those enrollment numbers that are coming in a bit higher, again, which is good news, but that would provide the superintendent and school leaders a bit more flexibility as they respond to those, those areas. With that, it was a lot of information. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have, or flip back to any slides that you might want to see or review again.
Very good. Thank you, Stephanie.
Yep.
And especially thank you for your commitment to figuring out a way to soften the impact of that state law change on our local taxpayers. Because I know when we got the property tax statements, and there was that sheet from the, from the county that had the big red box that said, "Local governments can't do anything to fix this." I really appreciate your creativity in finding a way to soften that change for our local taxpayers. Anybody have questions for Stephanie? John?
I guess I'd like to go back to the slide here about the change in 2011 taxes. And I think what, part of, part of the issue when we're looking at this, the one, further back.
Is this the impact?
Estimated impact of change on school district taxes if it were implemented in 2011, that one.
Okay.
Because if I understand what you're saying correctly, what would have happened if someone had a house that was valued at $250,000 in 2011, when they got their tax statement, it would have actually now been valued at $238,504.6% of, it would have been valued less, and the tax would have gone up by that 2.2%. Is that?
Correct.
That's the change in that, that, the way the tax credit is calculated. So, you would have seen not just an increase in taxes, but a reduction in value, which is what we all saw on our, our tax statements this year. And I guess for me, it's always helpful if you define the acronyms before you use them.
I'm sorry.
So, OPEB just kind of goes right through me.
It's other post-employment benefits. And essentially, that is healthcare for retirees, any type of insurance for retirees, health, dental, life insurance. And oftentimes, when we, the definition of OPEB is just for the insurance, but oftentimes, as we speak about it, it also includes severance payment. By the GASBY definition, the GASBY definition doesn't include payments for severance, but oftentimes, school districts will lump, and governmental entities will lump those both together, severance payments and the other post-employment benefits, which are insurance-related items for retirees.
Okay. And so, I guess I'm not clear on how increasing that and then is saving money. That's, that's another point where you lost me.
Increasing...
You said you were, the idea was to increase it for this levy year from $3 million to $3.7 million?
Right. We have, that's an increase in just that portion of the fund balance. Those revenues are coming into the district already. That's contained within the levy that's certified, that we've already received payment from the taxpayers on. So, that is part of our revenue that we have budgeted for this year. What this proposal is, is identifying those revenues and ensuring that they go to increase that portion of the that portion of the fund balance. And again, the district has benefited from restructuring of the contract language for other post-employment benefits, as well as severance payments. So we have had, you know, with that, the financial strength that we've experienced in, in recent years, we've been able to put that money into the assignment, to the designation, to offset future costs related to those severance and other post-employment benefits.
John, just historically, what we've done is, is taken a portion of our fund balance and, and the, the language seems to change with these accounting folks periodically, but it's, it's sort of like the Christmas savings account. We have the, the OPEB designation, and so we've been building that up. It's been built up to about $3 million now. And so if I'm understanding correctly, we're taking this $745,000 of our current amount that we're already receiving and putting it into that, that designated fund. And then for this coming year, not levying the OPEB amount, but relying on the general fund, or if necessary, drawing down out of that kind of reserve fund for OPEB. I don't know if that helps, but I mean, there's kind of a historical piece to this before you were on the board.
The bottom line again is that what you're doing is taking fund balance that you have as a district. You're assigning it to, to cover the costs of OPEB. And instead of levying, which would actually directly burden taxpayers because it would raise their taxes the additional amount to create that new OPEB levy amount, we won't levy this year. And we'll just use the dollars that are in the fund balance to cover those costs. So what it allows us to do again is, otherwise, we would have been looking again at a 9.8% increase with, with the new levy that's been approved by the, the community. Now, instead of 9.8, we'll be looking at 6.07%. And what we're also looking at is virtually 100% of the increase will be due to the voter-approved, the new voter-approved levy. Because we're actually, without that, we're, we've actually reduced the amount of the increase, or gone to a decrease of over 3% by just taking that OPEB levy out of the mix.
And just to add to that, that is correct. Our, our overall levy would increase by an amount that's less than what the voters approved. And again, it's, it's because we've targeted that net tax capacity levy for OPEB to respond to the legislative changes to the homestead market value credit.
Ellen?
So, and why we think that next year we won't be hitting them harder is we think that we'll be realizing the savings from the recent bonds, and then we're hoping that we might have another refunding option. So we're hoping to continue to be able to soften it as, if, in, at least the next year.
Correct.
Okay.
We, we will realize savings beginning in the subsequent year of approximately $130,000 to $140,000 from the recent refunding. We hope to achieve that same success the next time we have the ability to refund our bond. We have a, a general obligation bond outstanding that will hit its call date in 12 months. With, and if interest rates stay favorable, we would hope to achieve that same success.
Jill?
Now, does the state give any sort of requirements and/or guidelines for what percent of your fund balance that OPEB fund balance should be? And, I mean, are we within that $3 million is a comfortable percent as, you know, as an auditor we look at, or as, you know, the good working rule?
Right. There, there isn't no, there's no guidance provided by the state. We do have, every two years, we're required to do an actuarial report on our total outstanding And, you know, it's, it's good practice to assign a portion of your fund balance. Some districts have moved towards setting up trusts, either revocable or irrevocable trusts, to manage that long-term burden. How this district has chosen to approach it is on a pay-as-you-go process. And so it can be viewed much like our long-term debt for our general obligation bonds. We have a large debt, but our requirement on an annual basis is much smaller. From an accounting standpoint, though, we're required to eventually record that total liability on our books, much like we do our outstanding obligations for our bonds. But we're not required to set aside, just like with bonds, we're not required to set aside 100% of the dollars to pay those because they don't come, they don't mature all at once, much like all of our employees wouldn't, you know, retire all at once, because that calculation is based on all of your active employees, all your retired employees, and it's, it's really an actuarial calculation based on age and death rates and demographics, and there's, there's a number of things that go into that. So there's no real guidance, but we do have, we are, the fund balance where we're at right now is a, a good, a good balance to mitigate future risk.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else, any questions for Stephanie? John?
In terms of the, the debt service, now, it, the, the levy increases by about $75,000 there. Is there an explanation as to why the, the debt payments, or why we're levying more money for debt service? I mean, doesn't our debt service, we haven't issued new bonds in this, in this past year?
Uh, you know, it's very defined what we do levy based on the annual principal and interest payments. And so I don't know what issue, what bond issue that it specifically relates to, but it would just be a reflection of, of the fluctuation in annual principal and interest payments. They're not always a straight declining amount each year based on the maturities and interest rate on all of the various bonds within one issue. It can fluctuate up and down a bit.
Okay.
John, those bond schedules are typically set at the time of the sale of the bonds. And so what, what you know is that as you look at the calculations in each year, you know this is what the, the principal and what the interest is that is due in 2012, in 2013, in 2015, whatever. So we're simply putting in the dollar amount that is required by the bond schedule to pay for all the bonds that, again, were all voter-approved at the time that they were put in place to cover that year's worth of principal and interest.
And we're still, I mean, just to be clear for the people who are following this, we're still asking, your, what we're asking to do here is increase our, our levy by about $800,000 over the previous year, is that...
Actually, what, what we're proposing is a reduction in what the voters approved.
Well, I, I know it's less than our maximum taxing capacity. It's, it's less than what we asked the voters to approve for this year, but it's still more than what we taxed for this current...
Correct.
Year.
That is correct.
And it's, it's more in the sense that it's, it's about $800,000 more over the prior year.
Correct. Right.
But it's still significant less than our, our total capacity. It's less than what we could be asking the taxpayers to pay.
That is correct. The, what was approved by the taxpayers was approximately a $1.6 million increase in our levy. What this levy represents is that $800,000, roughly $800,000 increase. It's, it's different categories, though, so what the voters approved and, and as far as, as their, their approval of the operating referendum, all of those dollars will be coming into the district and will be utilized in the way in which it was discussed previously. This is a different category of levy. It doesn't impact the classroom and/or our capital projects levy items. So it's, it, it's easy to co-mingle them, but it's important to point out that it is an entirely different category of levy, and we're not taking what the voters just approved and, and reducing that. What we're doing is targeting a separate portion of our levy to try to, to mitigate this burden that's been shifted to the taxpayers.
Okay. Any other board members? This is our, thank you, Stephanie. Yeah, very nice job. This is our truth in taxation hearing, and so we now open this up for public comment. And I'll just remind folks who are here that we do abide by the same rules with respect to the public comment offered up earlier in the evening, that we ask that you state your name and address. If you are here speaking on behalf of a group, we do ask that you identify the group. And we also ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes, but I would like to give folks an opportunity to address the board. So is there anyone here who wishes to make a comment? Yes, sir, go ahead.
I didn't come prepared to make a comment, but I'm delighted to do so. I'm Carl Kasky, 1502 Goldenrod Court, speaking on behalf of myself and all of my friends and colleagues in the universe. Number one, I'm delighted to be here again. I do make meetings occasionally, and I do catch you on NTV now and then. And I'm always impressed by the work of the board and by the work of the system. Again, I, I get a sense of a high quality of the work that you do. I think that is reflected in the response to the bond issues. People understand when they're looking at these levies that you're doing very good work, and therefore, they're willing to, you know, give more money in order to let you continue to do that work. And listening tonight, I didn't understand all that went on, you can bet that. I've seen these figures and those acronyms go right by me in many cases. A few cases, I figure them out. But I'm, I'm impressed by what looks like very responsible budgeting on the part of the board, a good stewardship of our funds. So far to say that, my concern, and I heard it here, is to agree with you that I thought we got treated badly by the state again as, as a school system. They talk about, "Oh, golly, we didn't, we didn't increase property taxes." That's baloney. And when they look at a $700-plus million dollar, a surplus looking ahead for a couple of years, they forgot to calculate into that the increase in the property taxes. I'd like to see the figure after all the property taxes are added to that and see how much of an increase we had. We had an increase in taxes. We didn't have a neutral or a gain, or a surplus. So I just want to indicate my concern. And I'd, I'd like to have a figure, and I should have talked probably with Stephanie ahead of that, but I didn't know that. What about, how much delayed income do we have now stacked up against this? Well, you're going to get that $750 million, but none of it's going to come to you guys to make up for what they've held back, or delayed, or whatever they've done, or buried forever. I'd like to know what that figure is. I think the public would like to know. How much have you been shorted by the state over the last few years? I think that's an important piece of information. I wanted to see tonight what the effect of the new love, new law was on the operating levy. I know what it was on me. Actually, I was pretty good. It just may affect on me as far as, before the latest levy was $66. But I'd like to know what the, how much did you have to scratch in order to make up for the shorting that you got with this new law and the way they changed the thing? I know what it, it did to mine. My taxes went over 12%. So that was the effect upon me when you look at county, city, and in the school board, school district. So those are the kind of concerns which I bring as a, as a citizen, and maybe I can get some detailed figures, but I just want to let you know, I'm with you in the way in which we've been hurt by the state, both in terms of delayed money and in terms of reducing the aids that come to our district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else here who wishes to say something? Yes, ma'am.
Iva Dotson, 10994 Farrell Avenue, Northfield. I have not attended a school board meeting in many years, as you can see by my age, and I was really delighted to hear the presentation on what the school is teaching in the middle school and how they go about it. Ma'am, children come back and start over? They're doing grandchildren now. However, I came tonight in regard to the taxation situation as well. And I was really impressed with Stephanie's report, and it helped delineate many things. And I hate the bite of the tax, just like the previous gentleman. And I don't know what we can all do about it, but I think frankly, the state needs to find a new way to pay the schools and not just tax any property owners by what they have. Now, I got no credit because my house value is above what they say the cutoff is. So I really get socked. I have already $400 increase, and I haven't gotten the levy report yet. But I really appreciate all that you all do and the figuring that goes into it all. And it was my privilege to come and hear about it all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak? I, I think you'll find all of us here in great agreement that the state has got to fix the way it funds education in this state. You know, we've said it many times before, but, but right now, with the emphasis and the reliance on local levies, children in this state, the education that they have access to is really dependent on the largesse of the community that they happen to live in. And our children in Northfield are just abundantly blessed because this is a community that values education, and they're willing to burden themselves in order to provide it for the children of this district. But you don't have to go very far to find districts where communities are unwilling or unable to take on that burden, and those students don't have the kind of opportunities that our students have. And that just is not right, that, that a child's access to education is dependent on where they happen to live. That is, that just is not right. And that, to me, is a fundamental thing that the state has got to figure out. They've got to figure out a way to provide equal opportunity to all students, no matter what kind of community they happen to live in. So I, I very much appreciate your comments. You can see that we, we try hard to, to respect the taxpayers of the district and, and spend your money as carefully as possible. And I do appreciate your recognition that a lot of our financial issues are so far outside of our control. They are really things that need to be solved at the state level. But I very much appreciate your, your coming and sharing your thoughts. Anybody else who wishes to speak? I know there's a couple of the folks hiding behind the podium here. Anybody? Yes, sir.
Yes, I am Larry DeBoer, and I live at 1405 Mayfair Drive, Northfield. Been a 20-year taxpayer here at the, in Northfield in the school district, and came down from the Twin City area where I've worked for 45 years and a Fortune 50 company there. Had one son that graduated up there, and I had another son who finished his final two years here in Northfield. I've always supported Northfield, and I've always felt it was a great place to live. And I thought, people that came here to live, I would encourage them, great place to live and a great place to have your kids and raise your kids, and also lots of other benefits in, in this town. However, I'm now retired and on a fixed income. My pensions from my companies were fixed as of about 2006. No increase forever. My social security is being paid. That basically was with no increase for the past three or four years. They will increase, which was going to be about two, 1%. Next year, they're going to make an increase which will average out about 1%. My taxes on this statement went up 12%, but I think it's going up higher because it has a note here that this, come to this meeting tonight because if your levy, because this statement, I think, was printed before the levy, so they don't have the actual number. So I'm, I'm anxious to hear what my number will actually be when I have to come with that check next May 15th. But based on that, and I know you're doing all you can to satisfy the school, and we've had a great school here, but when it comes down to, if you want to live here, come down, retirees from the Twin Cities would be my statement, come and live, or before you retire, come and have your kids educated here, but when you... Or before you retire, come and have your kids educated here, but when you retire, leave. There's cheaper places to live without paying these kind of extra costs. So it is a burden. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to? No, you're together. Okay. Okay, well, I do thank you for sharing your comments, all three of you, and we really appreciate it. I know it's a long meeting to sit through, and not everybody's comfortable coming up and speaking in public, so I do appreciate you taking the time to do that. We turn now to items for individual action, and the first, the first item then is to certify the final 2011 pay 2012 tax levy. You have in here the superintendent's recommendation, which Stephanie very thoroughly outlined, and that is, I would ask for a motion to certify to the county auditors the 2011 pay 2012 final certified net tax levy in the amount of $15,189,967.22. Is there a motion? Some moved. That one's Julie. Second by Ann. Any further discussion? We've had a lot of questions. Again, I just want to thank Stephanie for finding a way around the big red box and mitigating this. I also do want to mention, this was a question that I had as I was reading this, but I don't think it necessarily came out, that the portion of the levy that is attributable to the election results, the amount that was put out in all of the campaign literature that it was going to be $76 per $100,000 value of house, that has not changed. That is not affected in any way by this change because this change only affects net tax capacity levies and the operating levy referendum that was approved by the voters is a different kind of referendum market value levy. So the representations in the literature with respect to that election are exactly what is reflected on this tax statement. The reduction is Stephanie's creativity in finding a place where we could reduce a levy on the net tax capacity, and that does help soften the blow. It won't completely soften it, but it does help soften the overall tax burden for people. So just, I don't hope I haven't made that more confusing by pointing that out, but I think it is important for people to be reminded that the representations that were made before the election are exactly what the impact is now even with this change in state law. So we have a motion and a second on that final tax levy. Any other questions, comments? Okay. All those in favor of approving that certified net tax levy, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. We also have the fiscal year 1112 budget amendment, and that was as presented by Stephanie. And just to highlight the changes in there, again, it reflects the fact that the state delayed our funding rather than a cut, which is what we had planned on was a cut. It also reflects that very small per pupil increase in funding that we did receive by the state. And then, and that yields an adjustment in revenue, also an adjustment in revenue because our numbers went up a little bit, right? And then we also have the recognition of special ed revenues and realignment to the appropriate year of those special ed revenues. I'm very happy to see that boosting the contingency fund back up to its $150,000. And I also am very happy to see the assignment to that OPEB. I like having that designated fund for OPEB. But anyway, so those are all the changes that I highlighted, all of them that Stephanie laid out. And so I'd ask for a motion to approve the revised 1112 general fund budget as presented. Moved by Noel. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ellen. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving that budget revision, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. Onto the consent grouping, and I just remind you, there were a number of items in the table file that were added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anybody wants to pull from that? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. Any questions, comments? All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And, excuse me, we have one item for information. We've got the December 1 enrollment reports. Always interesting to see where classes are. And all of that. Future meeting's coming up. We do not have a second meeting in December. Monday, January 9th at 7:00, we'll have the organizational school board meeting, and that will be immediately followed by the regular school board meeting, and then our second meeting in January, on January 23rd, 2012. And with that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.